2020, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Okay, I hope everybody out there is healthy and wealthy, certainly healthy and staying well. And, sorry. Can you go through the first two agenda items because I just lost my screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's go. Sorry. Exit full screen. There we go. There we go.
Left completely.
Just to let everyone know, we just adjourned from an executive session and the treasurer's report for February 2020 is available in the business office. Then we move straight on to the budget presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Furong. And take it away, Mr. Dr. Letson, Mrs. Figueroa. I'm going to stop talking now.
All right, so what I'll do, Jill, is I'll share it on my screen. You're muted, though.
Sorry.
It's going to be a very boring presentation. All right, so let's do this.
If you're sharing it, that's fine.
Hold on a sec. Sorry.
Jeremy.
You're going to make me the co-host because I can't share my screen.
I got it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're good?
I think so.
All right, so Jill and I are going to go back and forth as we go through the presentation, but I'm going to let Jill get started.
Sure. So we're back again to, you know, presenting the budget for the 2020-2021 school year. After learning that we were going to have to put the budget vote, the budget up for a vote on June 9th. So we are now back to re-proposing a full-length budget. We've given so far what the, you know, what cuts are going to be, and we're going to start over again. I guess it's like a restart of presenting the budget. We heard from all of the administrators early on in January, February, March. I know a lot of that is not something that everyone is remembering, but I'll try to help remember those things as we go through. So our budget development process is basically the way that it normally went before all of this happened. We looked at and we analyzed the current year's budget. We look at the actual amounts that we're spending. We look at cost trends from the previous five years to try to come up with what are reasonable estimates for what the New Year's budget will bring. You know, we identify areas of either savings or cost increases that we need to make. We try to put in enough funding for the programs that we want to have to meet our district goals. And then we also take a look at what our five-year projected use of fund balance. Do we have money that we can use towards our budget or don't we? How much of that would be a reasonable amount to use and what we need to keep there to be fiscally stable? So then this year, what's different is that, of course, we have to consider what the effects of COVID-19 were for us as a district. All districts across the state are experiencing the same thing. So we have to submit a revised budget, which we've been doing. We've been trying to give updates to that for the last few meetings of where we are with state budget cuts. I mean, state aid cuts. And then finally approving and submitting the budget for voter approval. That will be what we're doing tonight. And then next Tuesday, we'll be conducting the budget hearing, which will be the public's last opportunity to come forth, ask questions, and for us to address any of their concerns.
So just to emphasize some of the things that I've.
Jeremy, you're muted.
Again, it would have been boring if I was unmuted the whole time. So just to emphasize some of the things that Jill brought up. We're essentially, we're building a budget without knowing all of our numbers. And I know typically, in the past, it's happened where districts adopted budgets and they were hopeful that additional state aid was coming. And they spoke about positions they may restore if that was the case. This is sort of the opposite this year. We're building a budget with the expectation that we're going to lose more state aid, but without knowing what that number is. So it's forcing us to make very difficult decisions. And we're trying to sort of guess or estimate how much additional state aid we're scheduled to lose. And that obviously puts us in a very precarious situation where if we don't cut enough, then we're going to be in trouble if the state aid cuts are well exceed what we're originally cutting. But if they end up being less, then we would certainly explore restoring some of the, some of the cuts if our revenues actually exceed what our expectations are. So just keep that in mind as we go through some of the cuts. Just to highlight some of the really important facts of it. We were able to, through, I mean, several rounds of cuts, we were able to get our budget-to-budget increase down to 0.44% of the overall budget. And our tax levy increase is 1.42, which is within our allowable tax levy cap. And just to point out, our current tax rate is $465 below what it was in the 15-16 school year. So our school, our tax rate is below what residents paid five years ago. It just speaks to our fiscal responsibility over the last several years. This is the ninth consecutive year that we're below the allowable tax levy cap. And we were able to do all of this while projecting $1.2 million in lost revenue. So we'll get into more of those details moving forward.
So we're going to focus on our district goals and sustainability as we do every year with our budgets. Oh, move forward. And again, I looked at the enrollment. We looked at it three months ago or two months ago, three months ago. We keep looking at it. There isn't a lot of activity going on right now. However, from the time I originally presented this to now, we're at 1595, which is five more students than we originally projected. And our priorities, of course, for the 2021 budget are student programs, maintaining fiscal responsibility, making sure that we're looking at our future capital costs and our staffing needs for the programs that we'd like to implement. Jeremy.
Yeah, sure. So as we spoke about at previous meetings, even back in January, when we were ready to propose our first budget, we still have a reduction of 3.6 FTE positions and 2.6 of those are through attrition, through teacher retirements. So we anticipate the elementary school going down two sections. That was part of our conversations back in January. And that we had a permanent subposition at the elementary school for the year. That position was intended to be a one-year position. So that position has also been eliminated, as well as a 0.6 at the high school, a special ed position due to the retirement of Ms. Albano. So that's the 3.6 positions we're going down. We had previously discussed adding several positions back into the budget, but given our current fiscal situation, we're only now recommending adding back in one library aide. And there was previously a library media specialist on this list as well. We would have loved to hire a library media specialist. But as you'll see on the, on this sort of third round of reductions to offset our loss in state aid, that position was unfortunately lost there.
So as originally planned in the, in the first presentation, there are increases in the budget that we will be experiencing. And some of those are natural increases. We have our health cost increasing. That's our, our health benefits for all employees. That is going up 3%. Our state pension rates are going between the two different pension systems, between 1 and 1 and 1/4 percentage points. Our transportation contract, which we've resigned with our, with our current vendor, will be renewed. And we did not have to rebid that. And we will be increasing it by the CPI. That is what is allowed by law, but the CPI has not been established by the state yet. It's expected out this month. It has not yet been released for transportation. So we'll be seeing those increases. Our operations and maintenance area of the budget, we're planning a capital, what they call a capital outlay project. And how that works is because we have an enormous amount of HVAC upkeep and infrastructure capital costs coming our way. The building, specifically the high school, middle school HVAC systems being 20 years old. We find ourselves replacing a lot of the units. And having the upkeep is costing us quite a bit of money at the current time. Rather than not knowing or not knowing what those costs are going to be from year to year, if we build in this capital outlay project and we plan it and we send it to the facilities planning department in state ed, they, instead of stretching out the cost of that project over, say, 25 or 30 years, they will allow you to regain the aid on that the following year. As long as you handle it in $100,000 increments, they allow a $100,000 capital outlay project each year. So we would be able to plan that over a period of time and receive back 60% of the cost the following year. New York State Electric and Gas, I'm mentioning that. They, they're predicting an increase in electricity rates for this region. They're saying up to 24%. We don't know what that number is right now. So there are some increased costs in that particular area of the budget. And of course, the COVID-19 crisis has a cost associated with it. Maybe some additional cleaning supplies for next year, disinfecting supplies. We've also seen now, we're talking today, I was talking with other school business officials about, what does it look like when we have, you know, the offices open and people communicating? Like depending on how our social distancing is allowed to continue. You know, are we going to have areas that we need to do other things in or construct areas that, you know, where we can communicate with each other that are not the same as what they are right now? So we don't know what those, some of those costs will be. Contractual costs, we have natural salary increases. We have vendor contracts and obviously the cost of doing business every year, you know, increasing with outside vendors. There's always unfunded mandates. We have two in particular coming up this year. The cost associated with building survey and our additional water testing. We're up for, it's, it's, I think, every three or five years that we have to do the additional water testing for lead. It's in New York State law now. But we, you know, we're allowed to claim some of it, but very little on aid. So that's something that is an increased cost to the district as well. There are some savings. We do as much as we can to try and maximize those savings. One area in particular, our technology area. We have a team of technology people in the district that create quite a savings for us by doing many of the upgrades that we require in-house, saving the district a lot of money in that respect. And we also use our cooperative purchasing, repurchasing of those technology needs through our, what we call the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center. And we're able to get state aid back on those materials. In operations and maintenance, our buildings and ground staff are able to provide, provide a lot of skilled services that again would have to be outsourced. So we try to utilize those skills as best as we can. Our transportation, we had a study done this year of our hybrid services. In other words, we have our own and we also contract some out, some buses out. And the report showed that we were maximizing not only our safety, but we were also maximizing our savings with the current vendor that we're with right now, the contractor. We had a few staff retirements. There's four full-time staff, teachers retiring over the next year. So we have two retiring at the end of this year and then two retiring mid-year or five months in, three to five months in next year. There's a, each one has a different end date. And then again, the middle school is looking at, was looking at ways to change their bell schedule to help enrich their teacher-student contact time and enable the district to combine some resources between the high school and middle school buildings. So those are some of the savings that we're experiencing in our budget this year. So our budget revisited after April 1st. We had some of the following state aid reductions and we've gone over these over the past few weeks. So that, again, we started with the budget framework that we had set before the closure. And then we got reductions on April 1st for state aid, totaling $568,000. So we're estimating that we'll be able to utilize savings from the closure period. And right now, that's a conservative estimate of about $280,000. We have not closed out the year yet. I'm hoping that number will come in a little bit higher once we have our audited financials at the end of the year. We, we will be able to maximize some expense-based state aids to our advantage by doing some of the purchasing of our technology equipment this year, like a one-time expenditure based on some of the savings that we're going to have from being closed. And that will generate aid for us next year that we wouldn't have otherwise received until the following year. So if we back up some of those costs into this year and get the aid back on it next year, that will help us make up some of that loss in the first cuts of aid. And then we looked at reducing some of our budget expenditures. This was the first time, like I said, April 1st, when we first got news of the cuts, we removed what we call our installment purchase agreement for laptops. And instead of spreading that out over five years, we'll make that purchase this year and generate the aid for next year. And also an additional 0.6 teaching position we were able to remove from the budget. So those two things combined, saving $118,000. So after, after the closure, we have, these are our new budget considerations, right? The governor threatened to, threatens to reduce the aid further as much as 20%, but he does not tell us what his final determination in that number is. Then he releases an executive order that calls for a budget vote by June 9th. And that forces all districts to adopt a budget without knowing what that final amount of state aid will be. So we have to, as a school district, propose a budget with reasonable expectations of how much aid we think we will get. So districts now know that they could face additional cuts after the budget gets adopted. And these are all of the considerations that we have had to deal with over the past few weeks in hopes that he would give us a, the governor would give us or release a number on May 15th for us to work with so that we knew exactly what we were going to be facing in September. He's yet to do that, so this is where we are now.
So as we look at the details behind sort of that second round of cuts or what we're projecting to lose in state aid, we based our number essentially on a little over 5% additional state aid that we're at risk of losing. And that equates to just over $600,000. So this is sort of a breakdown of how we anticipate reducing our expenses for the upcoming year to make up what we're anticipate losing in state aid. Now, if our revenues come in higher, if this, if the federal bailout goes to the state and Cuomo doesn't cut our aid any further, then we would have the ability to restore some of these positions on a case-by-case basis. But for now, we have to take them out of the budget in order to be able to balance our budget, given the information that we have and the expectations we have for what type of aid cut we're looking at. So for administration and improvement, we have teachers that come in over the summer to do curriculum work. We're looking at a 50% reduction in that work. Reduction in overtime across the district and a reduction in professional development and conferences, any travel associated, especially out of state. All of those factors taken into consideration. From an instructional and co-curricular standpoint, as I mentioned earlier, we had a library media specialist budgeted for this year. This individual would have been split between the elementary school and the middle school to support both of those library spaces. That position is unfortunately out at this point. And we would hope to utilize the library aide to keep those facilities open. A second grade teaching position, as those who have been following the budget development process, this was a conversation we had back in January when we were looking to reduce sections at the elementary school. After further conversations, the decision was made to reduce the section at a different grade level. But second grade remains our lowest enrollment. I think we have just about 90 students in second grade. And this is a position that is currently vacated by a retirement and a position that we were looking to fill this year. So at this point, we're recommending taking it out of the budget. And if we're able to receive state aid or less of a cut of state aid from the governor, we could consider restoring that position as well. Mandarin in seventh and 10th grade. We didn't have enough in student enrollment in, in seventh grade to make a two-year investment. So those students were scheduled into Spanish classes at the middle school. Eighth grade students will continue in their second year. They'll be earning a credit in Mandarin for world language. And we were able to combine our ninth and 10th grade sections to create one larger section. They'll co-seat students in ninth and 10th grade for those students continuing in year three and year four of the Mandarin program. A point for a special education position. This was something we added this year to help with a scheduling conflict. And it's out for next year and we're working on creative ways to make up for that scheduling issue. We have teachers that work in instructional support specialist positions to support their colleagues or professional development. And those positions are recommended being taken out of the budget right now. Three teaching assistants or aides. We're asking each building to identify one position that they're willing to do without for next school year. And depending upon whether those are assistants or aides, it would impact, likely impact current staff. A 10% reduction across each building for clubs, for after-school clubs. We've asked each principal to look at their after-school clubs and make recommendations to, to not fill club positions that equate to 10%. And then the fringe benefits associated with all those positions gets us to our bottom number. Now, as we've mentioned several times, we had a budget that was ready to go to the public in January that had all of these positions in it, along with the cuts that Jill had mentioned on our previous slide. And between the two, that's where we're looking at $1.2 million of cuts made from our budget in response to this crisis that we're all in. And we very much wish that we were in a different situation. But at the end of the day, we have to make sure we present a balanced and fiscally responsible budget to the community. And that was our hope.
So as we, I'll go back to, as we prepare for additional state aid reductions, this may be a list of things that, or it will be a list of things that we have to look at. I don't know which or how many or how, you know, all of them or some of all of them we will have to include, but again, extracurricular activities, including sports, stipends in clubs, elective offerings, increased class sizes, materials and supplies, perhaps some building maintenance supplies or music and theater options we might have to change, BOSI's programs, field trips, arts and education, and any, some administrative costs or staff, any of the monitors, teaching assistants, office personnel, custodial, or teachers, and transportation outside of the home-to-school mandates. So any of those areas, which I think we've covered most of any area in the budget in that list, could be affected if there are more state aid reductions. So just to go over some budget statistics and facts, this is our ninth consecutive year that we are under the tax cap. Our budget-to-budget average change over the past five years has been really low at 1.5%, keeping that as fiscally responsible as possible. We talked about our tax rate change over the past five years. It's actually gone down 4.9% or if that equates to $1.33 per every $1,000 of assessment. I'm trying to relate it to as many people as I can in many different ways so that you can figure out what your savings would be. But an average home in Putnam County right now is valued at about $350,000. And for somebody whose home was valued at $350,000 in 15, in 2015-16, their school taxes would have been $9,594 based on the rate that year. And in 2019-20, they would have been $9,128. So $465 less than they were five years ago. Of course, there's no rate established this year for the new upcoming school year. The assessments don't get set by the assessor until July 1st. That's when we get our final tax rolls and we would come out with a new tax rate. But this is just a fact about what's been going on here and how we've been addressing taxes and trying to keep them as low as possible. And again, our star eligible residents are also receiving a 2019 school tax relief check because if this budget remains and goes through with a school, school tax levy under the allowable cap, they'll again be eligible for that relief check. So included in our district budget every year, these are the revenue sources and the expenses. So we have our revenue sources. Our state aid is at about 20% of our total budget, our total budgeted revenues. We get 80% from local sources. That's our investments, so any interest earnings or tuitions or reimbursements from vendors and our tax levy. That makes up the local share. And then the appropriated fund balance is a separate category, but I also consider that part of our local share. So when we use appropriated fund balance, we're using our reserves and we're using our appropriated, our fund balance that we have as part of that, part of balancing the budget. So the other side of that is our expenses. We have all of our general education programs, our special education and support services, our transportation services, all of the salaries and benefits associated with the staff in the district, our administrative operation and maintenance costs. And I just want to mention that the district budget every year, and particularly this year, would like to bring out or bring to light that that does not include the ongoing capital construction project. That was approved under a separate referendum and does, is outside of the regular annual district budget. We also, as part of the mandate of presenting a budget to the community, have to represent that as in three parts. What we consider the program, which is 77% of our budget, the capital portion of our budget, which is 12% of our budget, and the administrative portion, which is 11% of the budget. And the total budget being $51.9 million. So these are the revenues. This is a recap of our revenues and our tax levy is change, as mentioned earlier, is 1.42% over last year. We have our state aid at $11.3 million. Our local sources are $602,000. That's the interest earnings, tuitions and refund, refunds from vendors, BOSI's refunds that we get back. And then the appropriated fund balance is the $1 million. We had to increase that, but we increased it by the $280,000 that we mentioned earlier that we would be saving from the closure that we know about as of right now. So we are, we were earmarked to appropriate only $800,000 in the budget presented in March, but I've increased that by the $280,000. But I've increased that by the two hundred and eighty thousand that we feel we've saved during the closure. So that will be pushed into next year and be utilized to help make up the gap in the, in the loss of state aid. And then our reserves, we're taking nine hundred thousand from our reserves to help make up the difference. And I'd like to say it's significantly lower what we've been taking in the past to remove from our reserves. And I think that's a very fiscally responsible thing to do, is to take as least as possible from your reserves. I mean, they're not there to, you know, we hope that we get our state aid and our, and the other sources to balance the budget. And not have to constantly use reserves to do that. So overall, the budget is point four four percent increase. You can go on, sorry. So the expenditure side of that is the other side. And we have our general support, which is made up of the administrative costs, our maintenance and operations. And our general office, finance office and district office at four point seven percent. I'm sorry, four point seven million dollars. The instructional part of our budget is the biggest part of our budget, which is twenty-nine point one million. Undistributed, that just is what the state calls it and it's our employee benefits part of the budget. It covers all of our health insurance, workers' compensation. Sorry, the pension plans, so that's at eleven point eight million dollars. Our transportation services, just a little over three million. And our debt service, that's our cost for funds and borrowings throughout the district. Which is three, a little over three million dollars. Budget being point four four percent higher, a little higher than last year, but under one percent. This slide, I'm not going to go through the entire slide, I wanted to make sure I put something up. This is going to be on our website, this whole presentation. So I wanted to show a three-year summary of our budget expenditures and this breaks it down. For each year and each of those categories. So again, it goes through the general support, the instruction, the trouble, the transportation and the undistributed type of expenditures that the district has. And I think this is something new that I've added. And hopefully people will take the time to look at it and please send questions if you have them or ask questions if you have them. So our budget and tax levy breaks down as follows, our budget-to-budget change, again, point four four percent. Total budget fifty, the total budget that'll be getting voted on is fifty-one million nine oh seven eight sixty-three. And the total tax levy change from the prior year is one point four two percent, a little over thirty-eight million dollars. So our two thousand twenty-one budget remains under the tax cap. It sustains the programs that we could sustain and it invests in our children in Putnam Valley. And I want to thank all of the administrative team for helping to plan this budget. It meets our goals, it remains fiscally responsible. And this year was tougher than some of the past years in that we had to revisit this budget more than once. To try and see how we could make it work and how we could make our state aid, you know, meet our goals for our district budget. Talk a little bit about contingency budget. So this year, unlike years past, any years past. There is no possibility for a revote that we know of. So the vote is being held on June ninth and it's by absentee ballot only. And the contingency budget would result. If there was a failed budget. So the tax, what that means is that the tax levy limit would be restricted. And not only would we have the cuts that I'm talking about, one point two million, there would be an additional five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. That would have to be cut from the budget. Some of the things that to point out, there would, outside groups would have to be charged to use the facilities. Some of the groups that don't currently get charged. Capital improvement expenditures, not related to the, the project that's going on right now. But any future capital improvement expenses that are in the budget, that don't, that are not directly related to health and safety. Would have to be excluded. Any equipment costs that weren't directly related to health and safety would have to be excluded. And other types of things that would have to be cut would be staffing programs, extracurricular activities, athletics. In other words, to get that five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar number to be reached, all of those things would have to be considered. So our school budget vote is on June ninth, it is by absentee ballot only. The ballots must be received in the district clerk's office by five P M on June ninth. The ballots should be mailed back to the district. They're going to be sent out. Next week, that will be the week of May twenty-seventh, so right after Memorial Day. And then they will have to be returned. My recommendation was, it would be not to leave it sitting about and forget about it. But to return it as soon as you get it or as soon as you've made your decision. They should be mailed back to the district and have to be back in the district clerk's office by five P M on June ninth. Post office recommends mailing it back no later than, and we don't have a date in there.
Well, we didn't get a date, but I think what they were recommending was to give it a week.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I, I couldn't give you a date that would be proper. Because it all depends on what their service is, right? So.
They claim three to five days for first-class mail.
Right, I would say that you need to play it safe and we're not, you cannot, we cannot accept by postmark. It has to be in the hands of the district clerk by five P M on June ninth. I'm going to repeat that until people are sick of be hearing, sick of hearing it. And any questions that you have about absentee ballots or any voting questions, you can direct to embolino@pvcst.org. Or she can be reached, Maureen can be reached at this phone number and that extension, this will all be on our website. We've also posted other information about the vote on our website, right on the homepage. So that it's visible when you go to www.pvcst.org. And this presentation will also be available there.
And that's it.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions?
So just for the public. If you're a registered voter, you will get a ballot by mail.
Yes.
If you want to register now, if you're not a registered voter, what do you have to do?
You have to go on to the Department of Motor Vehicles website and register online. The Board of Elections is not open for people to go in. You're not allowed to register at a district office in the schools, it has to be done online. There is an address that we have up on our website of where people can go.
Okay.
Jill, I have one question, it goes back to an early slide, but you probably know it already. We originally, you know, reduced at our last budget, we put up a budget for next year, that was about five, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Less anticipated, being told that we were going to definitely get that cut. Then you went ahead and presented the six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar worth of cuts. Based on an additional five percent. Could there still be that, the governor's possibility of a twenty percent cut in state aid? Could there be another fifteen percent coming down the pike?
According to his comment and his, at his, you know, his presentations, his daily. Presentations or meetings of, at, you know, weekly, daily. He's been saying that he could, he's thinking about cutting schools, hospitals, police and fire up to twenty percent. If he does not, if the state does not get the revenue that they need to operate. That's his estimate of how high it could go. So by virtue of that statement, yes, we could get increased cuts. And upwards of, you know, fifteen percent.
So that's six hundred thousand could become two point four million. And then there's actually check-in times throughout the year, even if there's no cuts now. Part of the budget that was passed for this year has periodic check-in times. So they could essentially cut the. They can cut the budget or aid mid-year, which would be even more devastating for a school district. So those, that's just the reality of what we're living in now. And we're doing our best to navigate all of these while still preserving a sound instructional program for our students.
Jill, can you clarify the retirements? On slide seven, you mentioned two for elementary school, one permanent seven point six. Special ed in slide nine has two elementary school and two middle school, high school, are those the same or different?
The, so I can explain, so who the, the four individuals that are retiring are, it's public information. Is both the Sperlings are retiring from the elementary school. Chris Krill is retiring from the middle school and Regina Albano from the high school. The only difference between the four positions and the three point six is Regina taught two sections at the middle school. In fact, those are positions that we still needed to fill. Those positions, so her, her retirement. Presented a savings of a point six, but the reason why it wasn't a full one point O was because we had to fill a point four of her position. She was vacating.
So those are the same individuals?
Yep.
So as far as, I shouldn't say worst-case scenario, but a worser case scenario. If, as we go through the, the next academic year and the state does not reach its benchmarks for revenue generation. And they do issue these additional cuts, the way we would have to address it would be, could be in a myriad ways. Could be additional cuts or using additional reserves. Or a combination of all of those.
Correct.
Depending upon what that number is, I mean, I'm certainly not going to, not a proponent for mid-year cuts to staffing. But depending upon that number, we may not be able to make up the difference with just our reserves. So we would have to make sort of an educated decision at that point in time, based upon whatever number was presented to us.
And Jill, you mentioned that NICE Vegas is saying that we might be see a twenty-four percent increase. In electricity rates. How it would be for us that we have a solar system that helps with some of that to offset that. I know Dave had been talking about kind of waiting a year to get a full picture of what our projected savings are as far as our solar production. Now we're going to go into a summer, another summer, I should say, I guess. That impact would be a little less painful with the savings that we're getting out of solar.
It's true, he has reported back on some savings, I don't think we've gone through a full. Period of that time yet, but the budget does reflect, it reflected. I should say it reflected a lower amount in estimating his costs for next year. But then we also have to realize that some of this increase could, could decrease what we've been saving. So, yeah, and we don't know what that percentage is. We put, I put twenty-four percent on there because that's a threat. I don't know that that will be the same for, the same for, let's say, nonprofit organizations. Or, you know, corporations and residential areas. So we would have to see how that plays out. I would recommend our, you know, everyone or the community looking at the budget online. I mean, this is basically a summary of the costs. The one slide does show more of a breakdown, but it's still a summary. The budget itself is about eighteen pages long. And it's very detailed and it will be on the website, available with all of the attachments that were required to put there as well. And, you know, I'm always available for questions. And people are free to either email me at jfigarella@pvcst.org, pick up the phone. We do have, not that we, we do work remotely, but we do have the ability to, you know, take messages. Our phone system takes messages, I would get back to people. We don't have a lot of time between now and next Tuesday, but I would hope that people would take a look. You know, and, and please, you know, call in and ask questions and clarify information. Don't assume things without getting the real truth.
Facebook is not a reliable source.
Right.
Jill, I just wanted, I can't imagine putting together a budget when you're essentially guessing. And, and in free.
Educated guesses.
They are educated guesses and we all are living in free fall in our lives. In terms of how long, just all, all of the expenses, all of our needs in our own lives. So this must have been a particularly challenging budget year. And I want to thank you and Jeremy and all of the very busy people in your office staff. That crunch those numbers over and over and over. And the administrators who really looked and saw where can we make cuts that stayed sensitive to our taxpayer needs. Which is certainly a driving force, yet also kept our children's best interests in mind, so not an easy task, not.
It's an unpleasant, it's an unpleasant task, unfortunately, it's not over. I don't think it's over, I can hope that it's over, I don't think it's over. You know, and then having to come back and say that we need to do more is going to be more painful. So, you know, it's just, it's just not, it's not something we want to do. But I think all districts across the state are doing the same thing. I can't, it's, you know, I, I feel like we are not in this alone. This is not an experience that just Putnam Valley is going through. And that all districts are facing various, you know, the similar, same situations. You know, and, and some of them are making much deeper cuts than we, than we are making too, so.
And kind of to prepare the way forward, this is not kind of a one-and-done situation. At least, I don't think anybody's going to believe that it is. And that, you know, everything's going to roar back and be back to normal and everything be fine come twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two. I think we're looking in a, you know, hopefully it's a V and not a trough. Or U-shaped curve for our budget challenges. But this is, you know, very reminiscent of where we were ten years ago. And, you know, the, the gap elimination piece that was in there for years and years and years. And I think we're looking at a new version of that, maybe even worse. So this is a multi-year process and scarily enough, next year might be even more difficult budget than this year's.
I mean, I think it's a good point. We, we know the reality is, is the one point two million dollars we lost in state aid this year. We start off next year down one point two million dollars, plus our operating expenses will go up. So we already know that the hole we're going to be in next year is greater than the one we're in now. And there's no expectation that the state's going to come up with two years' worth of aid to make up the difference. So I think you're totally correct, this is going to be a long-term process to get out of this hole. Even without any adverse effects from COVID through the fall or next winter. Without even figuring any of those into the equation, we know that we're starting one point two million dollars behind as we start building our budget next year.
And just, you know, with the tax cap still being in, in place during all this. I, I mean, you, you could see where there might be opportunities if the tax gap wasn't in place. But having, it's a compounding feature that we had to deal with is.
Reality that CPI will probably be zero percent.
Right.
Yep.
And for clarity, if we're, we're going to be voting on this, presuming that it is adopted. This is, this is the number, this is the budget, so for if you've got questions, it's great that you've got questions, just know that there, that, you know. Given that our timeline, this is, this will be the number that is the number. Uh, and obviously there are changes that can always happen during, um, the school year based on new, new data. But this is the, the number, uh, for the budget that we will be, uh, more likely than not adopting this evening. And that will be what you will see on a ballot, um, in a week.
Right.
Or, or Jeremy, um, I would assume that there are very strict kind of guidelines about how the ballots are open. They do not get open until that five o'clock on June 9th. Are they certain trained Board of Elections employees doing it? Maureen, do you want to speak to that more?
Sure. We will appoint, it'll be our own staff as it always is. They'll be appointed though as election, uh, inspectors through, uh, and they'll take an oath of confidentiality. The ballots themselves will not be opened until 5:00 PM. I imagine where, is our hope they will be able to count them that evening. And we should have the result before the end of the night. We'll base the number of people we use and distance them accordingly, based on how many ballots we see coming back in. Really have no idea at this point, but I'm not, we'll use the elementary school gym. There's a lot of space in there, the old gym, excuse me, there's a lot of space in there. And, um, have long tables and just two people at a table and a lot of witnesses watching. We're also going to film it. Um, we've been told we don't not need to live stream it and we probably shouldn't do that, but we will film it for our own purposes, just in case. And if we're told we have to live stream it at the end, we'll be able to do that. It's not a concern of ours.
Do we think that, um, doing it that evening as opposed to the next day is the way to go?
I think so. I think we could definitely get at least four hours of opening ballots in, and that may be more than enough. As the ballots come in, they're in a, they're in two envelopes. The inner envelope is where the ballot is placed in a, in a signed affirmation envelope. So as they come in over the days preceding, I will have opened it to that point. And I will have what we call checking in the voters. So we know what, how many ballots are back, we'll know we don't get two from someone. And so the night of the count, they'll just have to be sliced open, they're separated. Then we, once the envelopes are removed from the ballots, then we start to unfold the ballot. So there's no confidentiality issues at all. So I, I think we could do it on that evening. I don't see why we wouldn't make an attempt. We'll, we'll know more as we get closer to see what's coming back. But I think we should at least start that night. And if we can't finish, we can't finish, but we'll do our best.
And Maureen, we'll have a log of who voted?
Yes, it'll be, there'll be the usual poll list. We'll have a check-in list of the ballots that have come back. Yes.
Thank you.
And just what happens when some come in after the ninth?
They do not count.
They don't get open.
5:00 PM is the cutoff.
And there's only voting via mail, correct?
Correct. But with that being said, if someone came to the district office and there's been people, we just don't know what our office hours were are gonna be allowed to be as we get closer to the ninth. But if we're here and somebody comes, of course, we would take the ballot from them. We would never send somebody away. But it has to be handed off to someone. We can't just have people putting it through the door or left, you know, it, it, it would have to be accepted by someone.
And then further on the logistics, the ballots themselves, are they being returned to our address? Are they going to a post office box and being retrieved? How is that working?
They're coming to our address. And we are still getting mail here. We have somebody picking up the mail at the post office twice. So we will, we'll be, we'll be more conscious of that. We'll make sure we're getting all the mail every day. But it's being done through the district office anyways, that's helpful.
And we're working with our local post office. Um, they're well aware of the situation.
Yeah, I attended a webinar the other day from New York State School Boards and the post office. And they all claim they're all well aware, the post office is with us on this.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There's no comments from the public.
That was my next question. Okay, good. Um, though Jill, you did leave your email address if anybody has questions. Um, and Dr. Luff, would you now give us your superintendent's report?
Sure. So obviously.
Superintendent, by the way, Dr. Luff, just want to throw that out there.
This is exactly how I expected the first year going. Um, so the, obviously the most pressing question we've been getting, uh, a lot about is our plans for the end of the school year to recognize our students moving up buildings or graduating. And I know that there's a lot of, um, anxiety out in the, in the community about it and, and people are looking for answers. So we, we've made a commitment to sharing, especially for the high school graduation. What's really gonna be two options that, um, we'll make a decision, uh, on the beginning of June, which of those two options we're gonna follow, depending upon the guidance that is released by the state. Of the current guidance we have from the state, even though there's parts of the state that are, um, lessening the restrictions, there's still a statewide restriction on gatherings, uh, which essentially prohibits any gathering. So it makes the maximum size zero. And that's what the current executive order is. And that executive order runs through May 28th. And while we don't know what's gonna happen after that, we have to be prepared for that executive order to still be in place and have options in, um, accordance with that. Now that being said, um, Dr. Jerry and I had a conference, a Zoom call with, uh, about half of the senior class. Uh, joined the Zoom call and they're very articulate and explaining, uh, what they would like to see. And obviously everybody involved wants nothing more than this or their graduation to as closely resemble previous year's graduations as possible. And that's certainly our commitment is to try to do that, but we have to stay within what the, uh, rules of, or the rules are at that given time. So, uh, we're gonna share more information on Friday, but we are coming up with, um, two options. Uh, both actually have some sense of in-person. One would be a, a larger group setting on the field, um, likely splitting the class into smaller groups. Um, limiting the number of, of, um, visitors of, of guests, uh, to just two per student. Uh, so that obviously would be the ideal situation. But we're also developing a situation where students would be individually scheduled. Uh, they would come into the high school. There would be a sort of an in-person exchange of a diploma and opportunity for photos. And we would do that over the course of several days to provide students an opportunity to, uh, physically walk across the stage and receive their diplomas. And then we would take the pictures from that event along with pre-recorded speeches from students, um, the principal and myself, and put that all into sort of a virtual slideshow, which would then be shared with everyone. So certainly a lot more information will be coming out as we get to the end of the week. But that's sort of in general, what we're looking at, um, in terms of having two different in-person options for our students, uh, depending upon the guidance we have from the state. For fourth and eighth grade moving up, what, uh, we're considering for both is sort of removed from the moving up ceremony. The removing of ceremonies will at this point be virtual. And I know the middle school has students recording their own names and sending in videos. Um, the elementary school, I think, is using just student photos. But, uh, for fourth and eighth grade, what we've scheduled is, and more information will come out, is opportunities for us, like a student parade, where students could decorate their cars. And we're looking for a date where students will be able to come onto campus in their decorated cars and to really say sort of it's a farewell, uh, drive-by for students to say goodbye to their teachers as they move on to the next building. So those are in the works for both, uh, fourth grade students moving up to the middle school, as well as eighth grade students moving up to the high school. Is finding dates and opportunity for them to sort of parade through in a, a moving up type ceremony. Uh, although that wouldn't necessarily be an exchange of diplomas at that event, but an opportunity to say goodbye to their teachers. We've also been asked a lot of questions regarding collection of personal items. Starting this week with scheduled teachers to come back into their classrooms to begin to pack up their spaces at the elementary school and some middle school classrooms. That includes packing up students' personal belongings. So, um, as that work continues, belongings will be placed into bags and labeled. And then at the, later in June, more information will be shared where we're gonna do sort of a, a, a drive-through, uh, pick-up and drop-up opportunity for parents where the parents will have the opportunity to drop off district-owned devices, like their laptops, Chromebooks, library books, other textbooks that they may have. And opportunities to pick up belongings that belong to them, um, in the middle and high school. It could be your gym locker, the hall locker in elementary school, obviously, any students' belongings from the classroom. So, uh, where we have plans in place for all those and stay tuned for more information. But later in June, everyone will have an opportunity, uh, to pick up and drop off without having to leave their vehicle. And that'll obviously be done in conjunction with the guidance we have at that time. Uh, budget, we just went through a whole budget presentation. Everyone understands how difficult of a budget year it is. And, uh, certainly we're doing our best to preserve programs and staffing, uh, and to make sure that the students who are here before us receive the best quality education possible. Budget vote obviously looks much different this year than it has in previous years. Everyone will be voting by absentee ballot. I just encourage everyone as soon as that ballot arrives, and if you have your mind made up to fill it out or return it. Uh, we don't know exactly how long it'll take to return. And if we get anything after 5:00 PM on the ninth, we'll not be able to accept it. So as always, we encourage everyone to exercise the democratic right to vote and to get those ballots sent back as soon as possible. As I sent out last Friday in my message, uh, this Friday was originally, uh, scheduled as during, um, attached to Memorial Day. So this Friday will be a regular, regular instructional day for all students in Putnam Valley. I also shared that we will be creating a re-entry task force. So this will be a group, a committee that'll get together to explore, um, how, when, and what it may look like when students return to school. There's also regional efforts underway. Obviously, our plan shouldn't be drastically different than our neighboring districts. So, uh, there's both regional and local work going on. And more information will be coming if you're interested in participating on that re-entry task force. I also wanted to share, I know our high school seniors were scheduled to receive Narcan training, um, during their senior week. Now, obviously they're not here, but, uh, Putnam County has moved that training virtual. So there's actually an opportunity on the 28th at 7:00 PM and on May 21st at 2:00 PM for anyone who's interested in being trained on how to administer Narcan. And there'll be details for how you can receive, um, uh, your own spray or kit at the conclusion of the training. So that's just sort of a public service announcement I wanted to throw out there for anyone who may be interested in being trained and receiving an Narcan kit. And that's it. Any questions?
I have, sorry, I have another, um, budget question. Actually, not a budget, but a process question to, to bounce off. People who are registered to vote and, uh, deemed to be valid voters should expect three things from the district. A postcard, which explains the process. And then a ballot, which is the actual ballot inside a couple of envelopes to return to us. All postage prepaid, so nobody has to worry about postage. And a budget newsletter or a district report card, which outlines the budget in some detail. Those are the three things they should expect from the district, correct?
Yes.
And some, the postcard should be getting to people's homes tomorrow or this week.
I would say this week, definitely.
And then following the 26th, um, that's when both the budget newsletter and the ballot should be going into the mail. So people should be receiving them that week with, again, with recommendation of people send it in as soon as they possibly can. Um, but with hopefully people are sending it in by June 1st to give a full.
I agree.
Seven to 10 days, right?
Yes.
So I did want to throw in one other thing that I, I skipped over. Our senior class advisors, along with their student officers, are planning another event for our seniors. Uh, they're calling it Senior Palooza. And it'll be sort of a, a parade-type event where students will be able to, this is high school graduates, be able to decorate their car and come into campus, similar to what they'll be doing at the other buildings. It'll be opportunity to pick up and drop off. And I know that they've, uh, purchased some special gifts and other surprises for our high school seniors. They'll have an opportunity to drop off their laptops. They can pick up their cords for their, um, uh, cap, with their cap and gown, uh, to go with their cap and gown and other things like that. So that's also in the works. I know our senior class advisors are working with the high school administration, uh, to get all of the logistics down for that. But that's another event that's going on for our seniors. So they'll sort of have the opportunity for the car parade, as well as in our fraternity for some sort of in-person, uh, graduation. Whether individual or, uh, larger group, uh, yet to be determined.
And I guess connected to that, um, I've seen a lot of questions about yearbooks. I know that's probably gonna be communicated through the, through the, the buildings themselves and the PTAs, et cetera. But if there is there any news on what the yearbook situation's gonna be for all grades?
The yearbooks will be distributed in that same capacity. So they'll be able to pick up their yearbooks, uh, while picking up other materials and dropping off. So during that sort of, uh, drive-through experience, they'll be able to pick up and drop off everything that includes their yearbooks.
Jeremy, the Narcan training, that's for anyone in the community now?
Yeah, um, I didn't see any restrictions on it. I had looked right before the meeting.
There isn't, there is no restrictions.
So it's anyone, uh, what I could do is I have the flyers. I can, um, I can share them and have them posted under our community notices on our website for anyone who's interested. There's a, both of them require sort of a pre-registration, so you have to click on the link and register. So I'll make sure that they're shared, uh, on our district website for anyone who's, wants to view the link.
Thank you.
So this is the public contribution come, um, time of the meeting. Maureen, have we received any questions?
No questions.
And as of right now, anything else from the board? We'll have another chance. Okay, let's move on to new business. And what order, during our regular order, Mr. Ferraro, you're starting?
Resolved by the Putnam Valley Board of Education to adopt a tentative budget for the 2020, 21, 2020, 2021 school year. The amount of $51,907.863.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to make CSE, CPSC placements as per document number 172-20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the PVFT related to remuneration and procedures applicable to summer school and the extended school year programs as per document number 173/20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the PVFT related to longevity as per document 176/20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved to approve a contract for health and welfare services for the 2019, 2020 school year for district resident students, four students at the sum of $1,046.52 per pupil for a total of $4,186.81 attending private schools in the Union Free School District of the Tarry Towns as per document number 174/20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into memorandum of agreement with the CSEA for a collective negotiated three-year successor agreement, July 1st, 2020 through July 30th, 2023, as per document number 175-20, attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to public comments. Um, Maureen, nothing now and, and people can't. Do board questions at PVCSD.org.
Nothing.
Anything else from the board?
I, I'd just like to make a quick one. Um, 11 o'clock each day this week. Feel a biliteracy? This is awarded to, uh,
The Seala by Literacy, this is awarded to our graduate students who get certified in fluency in English and in Spanish. The students have been presenting to us in Spanish and know habla español, but I was so impressed. Because they, they make their presentation in English and Spanish, and then they start getting questions asked in Spanish, and they immediately reply. It's been a very impressive mornings. And we had one yesterday, one today, and there'll be two on tomorrow and two on Thursday. And they started around 11 o'clock, and you can dial into that.
Yeah, so last year, we started our Seala by Literacy, it was the first year, and we had one student complete the presentation. She did it in Mandarin. So this year, I know we had more students. And I do want to commend the teachers and the students for continuing this work throughout the closure period. When we closed, these presentations were not done, and the students have been working with their teacher advisors to get, in some cases with outside personnel. I know we have one presentation coming up in Japanese. So Mr. Strata had to help contract a translator, someone who spoke Japanese, to be able to, to correspond with the students. So certainly very impressive to hear how talented our students are. And it was great to see that there was a number, a number of them that continued throughout the closure period to create the presentation, do all the work necessary to receive that recognition at graduation.
Yes, I just want to congratulate Angelica Ordonez and Gianna Patino. Those are the two students that presented yesterday and today. And then we have two more tomorrow and a few more in the days ahead. So we're looking forward to seeing their presentations.
And I went upon there, I agree. They've been amazing, and I've learned a lot from them. So, thank you.
It's also been nice to drive through town and see some of our graduates hanging, their pictures hanging from the-
Yes.
Telephone poles. Every time I see a name that I know, it's just, it's just so cool. So that's why town did that.
Do we know if they're going to reopen that? When I had tried to do it, it was closed, but I was-
Yeah. Jerry Howard, I mean, Jerry-
Jerry.
Said, yes, they're going to reopen it probably after Veterans Day or sometime before that, and then they'll do another round of people.
All right, good.
So, yeah, because there are people who didn't realize it or, and didn't get in on it, and, and, and we should honor all of them. So that, that was great though. But I, I love seeing, you know, ex-students, I just can't believe they could possibly be that grown up so fast. But it's nice to see.
It does make for some distracted driving, however. Trying to read the names, it's really hard.
Very true.
You read while somebody else drive. You can't read and drive at the same time.
This is when sidewalks would be nice, because-
True.
And I want to- Go ahead, Joe.
I, I come to think about, you know, May, and I think about science research and how there's a lot, so much activity with science research in, in kind of this season. And I'm just wondering how those, that work is progressing, since it's so interactive and so, so, it's so difficult to be in a kind of a regular setting anyway. But the idea of, obviously, all the competitions, I don't know if they're being done remotely or if they're canceled or how they're doing those, 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 those events. And if the, the credit issue, the SUNY Albany credits, that's not going to be an issue, because there's so many credits that are involved in somebody successfully going through the program. I just want to wonder, I mean, maybe that's a different meeting, but I just, I was just thinking about it as we're talking about this other stuff, how, if there's any update on what's going on in the science research.
So knowing Mr. Zupan, they are definitely continuing on their work, and I'm sure he's staying on top of them. I haven't heard anything about any of the competitions going virtual, but I do know that they're already planning for competitions for next year. I don't know if, Jeanette, if you heard anything else?
Yeah, the only thing we were not able to continue with was with our middle school, our fifth grade participants for Tri-County Science and Technology Fair. This was going to be the first year that we were going to be bringing our fifth graders down. And it just, it, we really were just starting to introduce it to the students right before the closure. So it was, it was really, we, we put it out to students to see if there was an interest, and the number was very low. In fact, I think it was one student. And so we just figured that we would, we would hold off until, until next year with that.
And I just want to, and just in the attempt to stay connected, and I know faculty and staff and families are doing it every day, but some of the videos that have come out of the schools have just been a delight to see. The ones to the seniors, the elementary schools, the middle schools. So thank you for all of those who are working to do that. It's a little bit of connection.
Yeah, I would say like teachers are sharing a lot of videos and pictures of their students and the work that their students are doing at home. And I know it's so helpful for me to see that, and it's helpful for teachers and our administrators to see what's happening at home. I also just want to give a little bit of a shout out to our phys ed department and our health department. They put together an incredible video about staying active. And I think it was titled, "The Putnam Valley Physical Education and Health Department Are Passing the Ball." So I'm not sure if you had a chance to see that video yet, but it was just put out, and it has our phys ed teachers and our nurses all giving a message about staying active during the closure. So I think we're going to post that onto our school website. But that's just another example of how people are just putting things, posting things out there and helping us all stay connected.
Mrs. McCormick's virtual art room was really clever.
It was incredible. Yeah. Amazing.
Yeah, and we have posters also that were just made. In fact, Dan delivered them here tonight. So we have seven community posters that were delivered. We're going to put them up. And we're kind of deciding where to put them up right now, that we're thinking the post offices and one here in the district office. If you have any other ideas of where we can put them, where they'll be seen.
Okay, and Jeremy didn't mention it, but I'm hoping if they do the video of the kids, graduates walking across the stage and the speeches, that some kind of music something will be included. I think Putnam Valley has such a strong music program, it would be nice to-
Yeah, we actually, we have a recording of our band playing "Pulp Circus Dance." So that would be, we have that all already archived, so we would be able to make that part of the presentation as well.
I've also enjoyed seeing the High School Honor Society power pointed through, as well as, I terribly miss the music, the high school and the middle school. I have it on my calendar, and it's very sad when it pops up about the concert. So, you know, it's, it's, we all feel the impact.
Okay.
Okay. Just one last thing. Just, just want to remind the community for the, anyone who's listening, one or two people who are listening, or when this comes up, next Tuesday, the 26th, is the budget hearing, and that'll be at 7:00.
Okay, so if there is nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the business meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe, stay connected.
Good night.
Good night.